All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the December 7th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners meeting. We'd like to call the meeting to order. First, we would start off with our invocation with Reverend Dr. Patsy McGregor, but I don't see her in the audience.
We've got a stand-in.
Oh, we have a stand-in. Perfect.
Perfect timing on your part.
You got some blue. Or would you like me?
Right there.
Okay.
By the God, we thank you for the gift of leadership that you bestow upon us. It is how you've led us as people is that you instill your spirit upon us. You've created leaders who create leaders who create leaders. I pray for these leaders here of this community, that they hear your wisdom in every choice and decision they make to know the responsibility it lays upon them. They have the gift of rational thinking, the gift of compassion, the gift of respect, the gift of listening, all those spiritual gifts you have taught us. And then may they bestow that upon those who work with them to create more leaders and the next generation of leaders for this county and for others. We are your gifts, Lord God. You created us. We are your children. May we every day wake up and stand into it and say, yes, Lord, I will follow you humbly, obediently, and bestow the incredible values you've given us upon those around us to be models of that. So I pray over this board, they be moved by you, stirred by you, to listen to you and to find more of you in one another. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
My name is Father Christian Anderson. I'm over at St. Mary's Episcopal Church, right down the street. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and unjustice.
Okay. This morning, we have two consent polls. So item consent number 12 and item consent number 13. Number 12 was approval of a contract for the acquisition of vacant parcel adjacent to the Justin Wilson Park in Palm City and adoption of the resolution approving and accepting a warranty deed from Ralph H. Parks. Consent 13, adopt the Martin County Water and Wastewater Facilities Plan Resolution. With that, we need a motion to accept the agenda as presented and the consent polls.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with consent 12 and consent 13 both.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Public this morning, we have a few public speakers. First public speaker we have this morning is Tom Pine, followed by Erin Larica, right?
Larica.
Larica, sorry. Mr. Pine, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Tom Pine. I live in Jensen Beach, Florida. I've been a resident of Martin County for over 45 years. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution protects the right to freedom of religion and freedom of expression from government interference, including my county administrator. It prohibits any laws that establish a national religion and impede the free exercise of religion, abridge or curtail the freedom of speech, infringe upon the freedom of the press, interfere with the right to peaceful assembly, or prohibit citizens from petitioning the government to redress grievances. It was adopted into the Bill of Rights in 1791. Supreme Court interprets the extent of the protection afforded to these rights. The First Amendment has been interpreted by the court as applying to the entire federal government. The court has interpreted the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment as protecting the rights in the First Amendment from interference by state and local governments. The most basic concept of freedom of expression is the right of freedom of speech. Freedom of speech is recognized as a human right under Article 19 of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The right to freedom of speech allows individuals to express themselves without government interference or regulation. Freedom of speech allows individuals to express themselves without government interference or regulation. The Supreme Court requires the government to provide substantial jurisdiction for the interference with the right of free speech where attempts to regulate the content of the speech. There are four places that the First Amendment does not protect: child pornography, obscenity, profanity, and frightening words. Nowhere in the Constitution regarding free speech are names or places not allowed to be spoken. The last time I was interrupted by the county administrator, that didn't bother me. I expect that. Harassment is the MO. What bothered me the most was the county attorney at the time shaking her in support, the county attorney not realizing what the essence of the First Amendment is. It was not this attorney. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pine. Next speaker is Erin Larica.
Good morning. Thank you for listening to me. I'm here again to bring up the issue with the speeding in Rocky Point. I know that the Neighborhood Restoration Program or project is on the agenda for today. That project, from my understanding, is set to commence in a few years from now, but I would like to go ahead and plead with the board to go ahead and change the speed limits. Fifty-five percent of the residents who did vote in the last survey did vote for change. We are still seeing drag racing, especially on Horseshoe Point Road, which was lowered five miles down to 30 with the Neighborhood Restoration Program or Project, sorry. We would like to see the speed limits at 25 and some implemented measures to force people to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker we have is Patrick Akram- Akraman?
Arsment.
Arsment?
Yes, sir.
About that?
I'd be here, but very popular.
There'll be probably a lot of them during the year as I read off people's names that I can't pronounce. I'm sorry.
You're fine. You're fine. I actually witnessed Harold do it during the Hope Sound Parade.
Yeah, but that was by design, though.
Right. It was wonderful.
You can't believe how many hours he practices all of that.
So, thank you, first of all, for letting me come in today. My name is Patrick Arsment, and I am located here in Stewart, Florida. Essentially, I work and live here, and this is the community that we chose to raise family in. And typically, we go error and, I would say, problem-free, no issues that I can think of. In fact, during COVID, my children decided that it would be cool if they got out and walked because they were missing pee and things like that. And so, especially my youngest, my nine-year-old, she asked her older brother, who's 22, that if he could walk around the neighborhood. And so, they proceeded to do that. It was something they did quite often, actually. They would do that all through COVID and no problems, you know, around our neighborhood. And we live in between Cove and Solarno, so just to give you kind of a pinpoint where we're at. And they walk in that area, no problem. And on this particular day, they decided to venture out a little further and go over to the mobile 7-Eleven store, which my daughter thought was fantastic. She got to cross over the main street, US-1, and use the stoplights and with my son and go get a drink with the-- that's what they were going to do. They go get a little water and, you know, come back and no issue. Or it should have been no issue. At that time, my son went and got the drink. He noticed that they were being kind of stalked, for lack of a better word, by an individual. And he was very uncomfortable in the situation, but he continued to go in the store and figured if he was around people, it'd be no big deal. And he had my daughter with him. So essentially, they proceeded to walk from the 7-Eleven out with their drinks. This person approached my son and asked for his phone and said that he was homeless, identified himself as homeless, and said he needed a phone. And my son said, nope, I'm sorry, you can't use my phone. And my son was trying to fumble to dial me, which we were a few blocks away, and I could have easily just been dispatched. And the guy got, continued to demand the phone. And so, my son said, absolutely not. You're not having my phone. And they proceeded to continue to walk to get away from the gentleman. I say gentleman lightly. But that individual then proceeded to turn his attention onto my daughter, my nine-year-old daughter, a minor child. And that minor child was told that she was beautiful, that she was gorgeous, and that she was too good-looking to be with that individual, meaning my son, and that she was potentially-- was she being kidnapped? And if she were, just ask for help and I'll help you, right? And then he pulled the ball out of his pocket and he started to hand it to my daughter. And he says, he has kids of his own. You can come play with them. You should come with me and come play with them. And he continued to make references to her looks and everything else, absolutely obscene. So it was, it must have been impressive how horrific this was on my children's faces because a older couple stopped and asked if they needed help, which then the guy deterred and he went a different direction. Okay?
Sir--
I'm not--
Can I just stop you for a second?
Yes, of course.
Usually, we have a three-minute limit, but--
Oh, yeah. I'm so sorry. Yeah.
No, but I think you have the attention of the board just to finish your story, but can you wrap it up?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And my apologies. I wasn't even thinking about my time. I just was, you know, getting into my screen. Thank you, though. I appreciate that. So quickly, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. I'm not naive enough to recognize that you guys should be walking around with shields and protecting the community from things of this nature. However, I also am a very, very, very distinct supporter in that we should encourage the behaviors that we want. And if we're encouraging the behaviors of a homeless population that is allowed to do whatever they want, we need to rethink that piece. I was horrified to learn the cops, who, by the way, I beloved Martin County Sheriff's Department. Congratulations. Good job. Please pass that along. I did John Snyder myself when I was at the parade. We normally have great responses and great everything from them. They are amazing. However, their hands are tied when it comes to the homeless population. So I didn't come with just problems today. I actually came to offer some solutions. And again, one of the things that I find interesting is that if we throw a fence on my property without a permit, what's going to happen to me? You all know. Come on, we all know, right? And so, why are homeless structures allowed to be built on properties with no ramifications? My understanding is that we call the police. The police then will say, okay, we'll go look. Oh, they're not doing anything. We can't do anything. They can't get them for loitering. They can't get them for trespassing because the owner has impressed trespassing charges. So my concern is to this commission is, why don't we leverage the power of our assessor's office and say, hey, no, that's a structure. You've got 30 days to get, you know, to file a complaint, or we start charging you for it.
Sir?
Yes.
Let's do this. If there are additional things that you want to share with us--
Sure, sure.
--you could put them in writing to us.
I actually have some of them. I'll be glad to--
Super helpful.
Yep.
And we appreciate the story. And I think more so out of the story, the couple that intervened, I think, are probably the most important.
Absolutely. Well, they were absolute heroes in that. I think that, you know, my son, of course, could have probably done something. My son's concern was if he got hit or hurt, then my daughter was alone, right? And again, I just want to say one thing if I can, Doug, please, Chairman, I apologize. But just in my investigation to find out what's going on with these homeless populations that are around, I found out that the gentleman that was in West Palm Beach that just killed that child, and this is why this is becoming more important for me, that gentleman was arrested in Atlanta, Georgia. He was then let out. He walked through Martin County to get to West Palm Beach, just so we understand that.
Got it.
Okay?
Thank you, sir.
All right. So we'll gladly put those thoughts together and share them. But again, just wanted to bring it to the, you know, we've got, I think, a gaping hole, and somebody's going to get hurt. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Last public speaker form we have this morning is Corey Recamp. Anybody else wish to address the board? Please fill out one of these and give it to the bailiff, and we will have you come up. Good morning.
I will try to do better today than I did the last time I was here. It wasn't a great time to start practicing, giving a speech to the board members. Sorry.
That's all right.
And I would like to change this up a little bit, maybe do a better job. I appreciate the gentleman before me because it has to do with a similar issue, but not exactly the same. I grew up in Martin County when I was 11. I'm 45 now. But I spent the last 17 years in Fort St. Lucie and moved back here because it didn't do so well for me. But I see our county is getting to be busy and growing like everything else around us. And before I start, anything I'd like, I just want to thank you so much for some of the improvements that have been made for years. I can't tell you, delivering the mail and driving US-1, how many times I was ashamed to see that we even had to have a sign that said, "Watch for the dip," that was right there on US-1 and Solarno Road. It was almost a sad thing. And I thought, how many people have to get their cars fixed? And, but this recent pavement job that you did was excellent. I appreciate it. I've been waiting years for it to happen, and it's beautiful. Also, Ms. Sarah Heard, I thank you for putting your money where you live and helping to improve your community. I would also like to thank you for trying to move the fair finally into a place where it really utilizes the space well. And Commissioner Campi, for--
Ma'am, please keep your comments to the board as a whole.
I apologize for trying to make that space available for a business that would utilize it better on Dixie Highway because of the traffic issues. What I'm here for is just a simple street light off of Hydrangea Boulevard, which the county owns, and also because of what's happened there. Every day when I walk my dog, I see homeless people. They are not predictable, and I don't, would hate to think that somebody is going to die there before a street light gets put out there. I've only been living here two and a half years, but within the first three or four months, I almost hit a teenager walking to the bus stop on US-1 for high school because it's that dark. There may be a street light right there at Solarno Village, but once you walk around that corner, it takes somebody walking a minute, a minute and a half, depending on how good you are at walking, to get to US-1. So I don't know how many street lights were needed or if it was just one or two, but it's a little thing. And I'll give you one more tiny thing because I don't want anybody to get sued. I was walking to Wawa, and I slipped in a hole on the sidewalk. I slipped off the sidewalk, and I just about broke my ankle, but I don't know. I thought I told Wawa about it. I'm telling you about it. It's right next to their stop sign. And I'm done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, and you did just fine. That's the last public speaker form that we have this morning. Next item on our agenda is Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Jenkins?
Yep. I want to, we had a very successful ribbon cutting and parade in Hope Sound, and I thank everybody that participated. It was a lot of fun. And looking at the pictures online, I realized that not only did I miss Commissioner Heatherington introducing, but I also missed Chairman of the School Board, Chris Lee Roberts.
Oh, you mentioned--
You did.
Did I?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I was--
With all the pressure that you--
It was. It was. I don't do well under that type of pressure, anyway.
Ten thousand people watching.
So, anyway, it was a lot of fun, and I thank everybody for doing that. Also, for Commissioner Funds, I spent $2,542 on some Christmas decorations for Bridge Red. I am interested in writing a letter of support for the Florida Forever Program, supporting the efforts to increase the ranking of Palmar on the Florida Forever List. This was requested by our staff, and if we could do that very quickly. As a matter of fact, John, I think is headed to Tallahassee Thursday. So if we could do a support letter for that, that would be great. And then, lastly, the Indian Town Parade is this Saturday. The parade actually begins at 5:45 at Big Mound Park, and I'm going to try to attend that. So that's all for me.
Fantastic. Commissioner Heatherington.
Did you say Friday or Saturday?
Did I say Friday? It is Saturday.
Saturday?
Yeah, yeah.
You'll be there on time.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, on that note, I just have one event to announce. Santa City Lights. Last year during COVID, we didn't have a parade, and the Martin County Realtors at the Treasure Coast put together a collaborative effort to have trees in the Memorial Park. And they will go up on Friday, December 10, and they will stay there for a couple weeks. So it was a beautiful sight just to meander to the park and see those trees last year. So that begins this Friday, and so please stop by Memorial Park to see the trees. That's all I had this morning.
Fantastic. Commissioner Campi.
I'm fine.
Commissioner Heard.
Yeah. Commissioner Smith, are you going to the ARC meeting?
I have to check my calendar. If I can, I will be there.
Okay. Also, I think it's a fine idea to write a letter of support for Palmar. Also, Barbie Ranch is on the same agenda, so let's also include a letter of support for Barbie Ranch. Thanks.
Is that it?
Yes.
So a couple things. The Palmar thing, whatever, Harold, and I apologize for walking off the dais for a second. So you want the board to draft a letter of support for the expansion of the boundary, to include the chimney and whatever components of it? Because I think the chimney portion is what we're asking to get included.
Okay.
Is staff--
This is more in line of raising its priority to, for acquisition, and if it--
Okay, so is it, is it boundary as well as acquisition or both, or?
That wasn't discussed, but--
Okay. Then I have confidence between you and staff that you can put together what it needs to be. That'll be fantastic. Appreciate that.
I'll work with John after the meeting.
Okay. Do you know if John's going?
Yes.
Yes.
He is going. Okay, great. Tonight, at 5:30, starts The Taste of Jensen and Downtown Jensen. We'll have our Christmas tree lighting down there, which is really always the highlight of that evening. The Christmas jubilatory will, from Jensen Beach High School, will be kicking off. The singing at about 6:15, I think. And then we'll have the lighting right around 6:30 and Taste of Jensen to follow. Ocean Breeze will have its annual golf cart parade through town. That'll be fun to watch. And so, if you want to come on down to Jensen tonight, that'd be fantastic. Harold, you did an amazing job with all the pressure that you had on you on Saturday. I got to tell you, Hope Sound does a phenomenal job, and they turn out a great crowd. I think, I think it was probably the biggest yet that I remember seeing. And also, I guess you win the prize for the largest turnout for ribbon cutting that I've ever been part of. That was well masterminded on your side, but great job, and great job for everybody that came out. It was really fun to see everybody. With that, Terron, do you have anything this morning? Ms. Woods, do you have anything this morning? Okay. First item on the agenda will be the consent poll of item 12, approval of a contract for acquisition of a vacant parcel adjacent to the Justin Wilson Park in Palm City and adoption of the resolution approving and accepting the warranty deed from Ralph H. Parks. Commissioners, who pulled the, oh, Commissioner Heard, I'm sorry. Commissioner Heard?
I pulled it because I didn't understand it, and I met with Don Donaldson yesterday. I thought that it was a parcel that was across Map Road so that people were going to have to cross Map Road on a curve. And it reminded me exactly of the same, the one that we had across the street on Sansford Park. And I just thought it was going to be a very unsafe acquisition and unsafe crossing. I couldn't see putting a crosswalk on a curve on a major road, but I was wrong.
So do you want a staff explanation, or are you okay?
Sure. I think, I think that's, you know, it's, it's an acquisition, and I think that we need to address it.
Don Donaldson--
Good morning.
--County Administrator here with Carlos Secura, our property manager. Just as a quick introduction, this parcel was created some time ago. At one time, it was considered to be part of a subdivision of the Oaks. It was not needed. It was a straight zoning project, and so this parcel is left over. It has the potential to have a single-family home built on it. The property owner had it originally listed for $190,000. And discussing with the property owner that it would be beneficial to be in the park and not, one, you can see on the attached image, the rectangular parcel in question is identified in red. Just to the immediate left is the parking that serves Justin Wilson Park. So it is strategically located that it would be beneficial to the park. I think most parkgoers would assume that it's already part of the park. And so, it's certainly the first and foremost, it benefits the park. Second, a single-family home on that curve, as we know, is a problematic area for traffic. It would be something we would rather not have, but legally, it may be if it was attained. And then, lastly, in terms of the acquisition cost, it is .64 acres, I guess, is the actual legal description boundary. Recently, the, last year, 2020, the county purchased a property in Old Palm City at $95,000 for roughly half the cost. There is other parcels selling for $150,000 for anything from a quarter acre. And then, of course, you have other properties in Palm City selling well over a quarter million for similar-sized lots. This particular lot, while it does have issues, ultimately, the property owner, this was a best and final offer, and that's all that was going to be accepted. We felt that it was in the best interest of the county to acquire this for park purposes. And we're here to answer any other questions that you may have. Oh, finally, I think we appreciate the District Commissioner for contributing some funds to help make this project happen.
Commissioner Heard, was that adequate?
Yes.
Commissioner Campi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Donaldson, thank you for that. Yes, I will be using $30,000 of my district funds to contribute to the overall cost of this parcel. I'd like to thank Mr. Parks. It's interesting that Ralph Parks is selling property to, that we can use for parks. And this is an important piece from my perspective because in another park in Palm City, Charlie Layton Park, there were a couple of parcels available quite a long time ago that the county did not move on, and they were turned into homes, residences, that are now right on the park. And that property would have been helpful in terms of additional parking, which we could have used there, or it's just odd to have people living directly, nearly directly inside the park. So everyone had always said to me, why didn't the county acquire those parcels? And we did not at the time. I was out of office during that acquisition, and when I came back and staff had reached out to me, you can see in this picture where the red triangle is, there's a skinny portion of parking. But our Parks and Rec Department has done such an excellent job of bringing this park really up to a high level. It's got a lot of activity with youth, girls' softball and, and other kickball, and people are using the park. So having that little extra space for additional parking will be very helpful. So I appreciate Mr. Parks because, as Mr. Donaldson said, that parcel could have been sold off at a much higher profit. And Mr. Parks has been a member of our community for a long time, and when Don says best and final, that's a best price for everybody. That was a great, and he's here, so we wanted to, I personally want to thank you, sir. He put the benefit of the community before himself in this particular case, and I thank you.
And with that, would you like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept staff's recommendation for this purchase.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. I thought I would add to all of this, and Ed brought up a, you know, a conversation that I wished we had as well. There was actually even some conversation, but there wasn't any, I guess, interest at the time in buying those additional parcels over at the other park. When a parcel comes up near one of our neighborhood parks, and, you know, the regional parks are a whole nother story, but I think it should just be an automatic thing that staff looks at trying to figure out how we acquire them. We've missed a couple over in Rio that I wished we had picked up because it could have added some capacity that some of our residents are looking for. And so, I think it's, I think it's absolutely imperative that on this parcel, we pick up this one, but also that we look at, one, whether they're small parcels, large parcels, whatever they may be, that we add to the mix because it's getting tighter and tighter, and it's just that much more difficult sometimes to do the things for parks we'd like to do for them. So--
Commissioner Heard got a great pick for Maggie's Hammock. That was another great purchase-- That was another great purchase of an adjacent piece of property that, you know, you're not getting them back, so.
So, anyway, super good idea picking this one up and great job. Anybody from public wish to comment on this? Mr. Parks, thank you for your part of all this, and thank you for having the last name of Parks. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The second item that was polled from consent with Commissioner Hurd, adopt the Martin County Water and Wastewater Facilities Plan Resolution. Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, I pulled this one. I started reading it, and for members of the public, this is double-sided. This is the plan that we're, we're going to vote to approve today. And we've done, our utility department has done such a remarkable job of getting DEP grants for Septic to Sewer. We've got eight million for Port Salerno and New Monrovia, and $10 million for Rocky Point. We get state revolving fund loans. We get all kinds of grants. And the reason that we get these, the reason that we're successful in acquiring them, is because our utility department does such a marvelous job of planning. So when the DEP releases funds, we're ready. And I just think that we need to, it's, this is a terrific document. It's really great planning, and I just wanted to salute our utility department for making this possible for us.
Wow, Sam.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Yeah.
It was a team of folks involved. I'm just trying to steer this thing along, keep both hands on the wheel and my foot on a gas pedal. But we've been very fortunate historically in applying for state revolving fund loans. It always requires a planning document, and typically, that's done project by project. And since you've approved this 10-year program, we took the approach that, let's take a program approach, programmatic approach, as opposed to project by project. And so we've included nine years of projects. The next nine years, we'll submit requests for inclusion. The DEP accepts those four times a year. We are scheduled for our first three-year cycle to be reviewed in February. And we'd really like to have funding offered for a three-year cycle, as opposed to individual projects. And so that's our approach. I don't know if any other communities have done that. I'm not aware of that.
Too late.
So.
That's great, Sam.
But thank you.
Great job.
We appreciate the support. Thank you.
Commissioner Hetherton, don't go anywhere.
I was going to say, too late on not telling other communities, because I think that we are being based, this program is being based as a model for other communities. You spoke recently at the Indian River Lagoon Council, where there were five representatives from counties, DEP, South Florida Water Management, and then recently in our Tri-County meeting with Indian River, St. Lucie, and ourselves. So I think that this program and this plan is presenting itself as a, a model program, so good job.
And just as a, as a side, you know, we had our 16-county coalition meeting last Friday. And before the meeting starts, really, where we get into the agenda, all the commissioners from around the counties that participate discuss what they're doing. To the county, everybody has really moved into this sphere. They're aggressively moving in the Septic to Sewer conversion program. I believe it was Lee County, Don, I think, they got a $40 million grant on their side of the state. So the competitiveness side, and what makes this all that more important, to have a really solid strategic policy document and plan that, that we embrace and that, that we adopt by policy, will keep us, I, I hope, sort of, you know, up in the upper end of getting these grants, because everybody else is starting to figure out how to do it, and they are wanting to do it, and, and they're drawing down money. Thankfully, the legislature, the governor, and the departments are pouring a ton of money into that effort. So, you know, it, you never know how long these things are going to last. Right now, the economy is fairly good, and we saw in the recession where, you know, that was really pulled back and those grants weren't available. So all the more kudos to you and to the department and everybody working on this thing to really start pushing as hard as we can, because you just never know where the future's going to take us. I believe we need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the wastewater...
Consent 13.
Consent 13.
Anybody from public wish to comment on this? Sam, again, nice job. Tell your department, thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good stuff, Sam. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearing number one. A public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance amending Article IV, Emergency Medical Service and Transport Ordinance, Chapter 87, Health General Ordinances, Martin County's Code. Who will be doing this?
Chief Campbell.
Chief, come on up.
Chief Campbell, come on up.
There he is.
You need to see your fucking son in all this stuff.
You've always been so shy. That's funny. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. For the record, Chief Campbell, Chris Campbell, Martin County Fire Rescue. In August of this year, after numerous requests from HOAs to offer the residents paramedic coverage within their neighborhoods, the EMS council board began discussing updating the COPCN ordinance. The old ordinance was found to be outdated and it lacked efficiency. Didn't allow for HOAs to have the service for the neighborhoods. Plus, we always had to have a quorum to vote in the COPCNs every two years, and the quorum is always a challenge to get everybody there when they're supposed to be. So we definitely wanted to update this thing to make it a little bit more clear and more efficient for the people in our, that we're trying to take care of. Sally Wade is the Director of Emergency Management for Martin County. She has a lot of history in other agencies, working on the COPCN ordinance boards. And she brought a lot of information to the, to the floor with us. And between her, myself, and Elise Elder, we were able to rewrite this ordinance to make it more efficient. Some of those changes were, we updated the terminology and definitions. We updated the definition of the medical director and the requirements for, to be a medical director. We increased the filing fees for secondary providers and added filing fees for primary providers. We increased the length of time for the COPCNs. We added how and when to submit. We added exclusions for the COPCN under states of emergency. And we also added emergency powers in the event of a public safety hazard. After these changes and the work we put in, it's our opinion these changes add value and efficiency. Any questions?
No, sir. No, nothing over there? No?
No questions. Great job.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Public comment.
I'm sorry. If there is any public comment on this item, seeing none from the audience, thank you, Elise. We need a motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance and authorize the issuance of the replacement COPCNs to the existing COPCN.
Motion, we have a second. Further discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, yeah. Next item on the agenda is public hearing number two. Public hearing to adopt the notice of intent resolution required by Section 197.3632 Florida statutes for special assessments. Smith, Keithley, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Phil Keithley, chief project manager with the Utilities and Solid Waste Department. This is a public hearing to adopt a non-binding resolution declaring the board's intent to use the uniform method of collection for non-advalorem assessments for a proposed series of special assessments that may be imposed within certain municipal service benefit units to be established for road paving and ancillary drainage, dredging services, stormwater services and facilities, and water and/or wastewater projects. Section 197.3632 of the Florida statutes requires that the county hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution of intent to use the uniform method of collection for any assessment program in the calendar year prior to any such collection. The resolution, which does not obligate the county either to use the uniform method of collection or to impose any one special assessment, must be adopted by January 1, 2022, and sent to the tax collector, the property appraiser, and the Department of Revenue by January 10 of 2022. Additionally, Section 197.3632 requires that the notice of the public hearing to adopt the resolution of intent be published for four consecutive weeks, immediately preceding the date of the hearing. The notice of intent was properly advertised, and the affidavit of publication of the notice of intent will be part of the resolution. The notice of intent allows the county to meet its statutory notice requirements necessary to use the uniform collection method. The resolution to be adopted today is non-binding, and the board may reduce the geographic areas covered by any future assessment or decide not to impose any special assessments at a later date. By adopting the resolution, the board is simply preserving the right to use the uniform collection method, beginning in November 2022, for projects implemented prior to such a date.
Could you go to staff's recommendation?
Staff recommendation is for the board to accept public comment and adopt the resolution of intent to use the uniform method of collection for non-advalorem assessments. And that concludes my presentation.
Keithley, thank you very much. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this? This is something we do yearly, and it just takes a list of all of our projects, lumps them into one item. Oops. Sarah, did you have something on this one? No?
I have some old lights on.
And we may or may not do these projects one way or the other, but we have to announce them every December and adopt them. So anybody from the public? Seeing none? Commissioners? Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Next item is a public hearing quasi-judicial request. Item one, request by Wright Fish LLC for a major final site plan approval for the Wright Fish 711. Mr. Walden, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, and it is quasi-judicial.
Right, so first and foremost, Commissioner Hetherton, it says you have something you need to file with us?
Not this one.
Oh.
Next one.
Next one? Not this one. Okay, so this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Commissioner Jenkins, do you have anything filed?
If I have any, they've been filed.
Commissioner Hetherton?
If any, they've been filed.
If I have any, they're filed. Commissioner Campi?
I have none.
Commissioner Hurd?
I have none, and they've been filed.
Are there any, are there any intervenors with us today?
No, sir.
Seeing none. Mr. Walden?
Swear.
I need to swear I'm in. That's right, this is my first rodeo. Anybody that is going to partake in this agenda item public hearing? Needs to be sworn in if you're going to give testimony.
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Now, Mr. Walden.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Peter Walden with the Growth Management Department. And I will start by submitting the agenda item along with my work history for Exhibit 1. Okay, so this is an application for a major final site plan for the Wright Fish 711. This was heard before the LPA on October 7th of this year. The LPA voted unanimously to recommend approval. This was also continued from the October 19th, 2021 BCC hearing. So this is a request for a final site plan for the development of a gas station with convenience store and a car wash. The land use is general commercial, and the zoning is also general commercial. Go back in time a little bit. The property in 1970 was part of the Wright Fish Tropical Fish Farm. It was utilized for that for many years. Later on, in 1995, the site was developed. It had a small gas station, some retail, and a small office area. But by 2014, all of that was removed, demolished, and the site has been vacant ever since. So this is the proposed development for the site. It includes, it's a three-and-a-half-acre site, includes a 4,496-square-foot convenience store with a 980-square-foot drive-through car wash facility. And it has eight fuel pumps that round out the vertical construction on the property. It's accessed from both Canor Highway and southeast Salerno Road. And staff, I need to reduce this, Donna, please, so I can get to the... I'd like to revise some of the language in the resolution that is in the agenda. I'll go through it quickly, since it was not in its final form in the agenda item. Section G of the resolution relates to applicant contributions to development that's going to be going on on Salerno Road. The county has scheduled improvements to be made, and the applicant needs to make improvements for turn lanes as well. So the total contribution from Wright Fish LLC is $262,700. Of, of that, they are granted a $17,571 credit for previous impact fees from previous development. So that leaves a total due from the applicant of $245,129. Of that, they will be able to credit $78,295 in current impact fees. So they will, the $245,000 will be due at post-approval, within 60 days of approval. But they will not have to pay the $78,295 in impact fees at permit issuance, as they normally would. And that is the only edits to the resolution that we'd like to make. So with that, the development review staff have found the development application to be in compliance with all applicable regulations, as detailed in the staff report. And we would move that the board receive and file the agenda item and all its attachments, including the staff report as Exhibit 1, including the revised text in Section G of the resolution to approve the application. And move that the board approve the final site plan for Wright Fish 711. Sorry, I think I got that right. That concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer. Any questions?
Okay, any questions to staff? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let, I think I need to clarify something. So that paragraph that Peter just put up there, that $78,000...
Krista, can you move either the mic down a little bit?
Sure. Sorry. And Krista Storey, Senior Assistant County Attorney. So that $78,295 is actually part of the payment. So I thought I heard something regarding a credit, but it is not. So it's actually a total contribution related to that. So I wasn't, I was a little confused. I'm sorry. Maybe I misheard.
Yeah, they'll pay that included in the $245,000, do it after, for, in 60 days of approval, but they won't have to pay it as part of the impact fees that'll be assessed at building.
Well, they'll pay it ahead of time, that's it, I guess.
Right.
It's a total count, it's a total amount.
Can we do, can we?
Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe it was me.
No, no. Can we pause?
It wasn't.
Either Krista or Peter, can you just explain what was discussed so that it's clear as to what's happening, so everybody understands?
Okay, so the, the county has a development project for Salerno Road. Both Showcase, the next public hearing, and this project have things that they have to do for their entryways. So they're going to contribute to the overall project. So the overall contribution...
Above and beyond the impact fees.
Well, yes, correct. So the actual above and beyond the impact fees is the $184,405. So they're agreeing to pay their impact fees upfront, rather than that building permit issuance. So the total paid at, at post will be $245,000. But they won't have to pay the $78,295 when the building permit gets issued. That, that'll be a prepayment of those impact fees.
Thank you. That's a better explanation. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is everybody clear?
Yes.
Got it.
Right, okay. Any other comments for staff? Any questions for Commissioners or staff? Seeing none. Does the applicant have any presentation at all? Mr. Parks?
Good morning. For the record, my name is Ralph Parks. I'm the manager of Wright Fish LLC.
And you have been sworn in, correct?
I'm the only one here today.
You have been sworn in, correct?
I stood up back there and raised my hand, and she saw me.
Yeah, no, I'm just, just, for the record, we...
She saw me last time, not doing it, so she...
Just for the record, we do that.
I didn't want to be reprimanded again.
No, don't do that.
I want to thank staff. They made it really, I'm not going to say easy, but it was a pleasure to deal with them, and we got through it, I think, pretty quickly. And I just wanted to publicly thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Appreciate that.
Go Navy, beat Army.
Not true.
Just a quick question, maybe it'll come up on the next item. The Walgreens entrance and Salerno Road and the dividers that are there, is that going to get readdressed with all of this so that you can come?
Yes, it is.
Lisa, you want to?
She doesn't want to, but she wants.
Lisa, do you need to be, Lisa, do you need to be sworn in?
I did. I was in the hallway, but I raised my hand and said...
Okay, so for the record, Ms. Wixler was sworn in for the public hearing.
Lisa Wixler, I'm the county engineer. So the project that we're proposing to do is extending the bicycle lanes on Salerno Road from Lake Drive to Canor Highway. There are no bicycle lanes there today. And then we're going to reconfigure the turning lanes so that the turning lane into the Walgreens, there will be a turning lane there, as well as a turning lane into this left turn lanes, into this development. And then we are planning to extend another through lane through these two developments and then merge down. So that's why we're looking at this as one bigger project.
Okay, so can we back up just a tad? So if you're coming off of Canor, you're going east on Salerno?
Yes.
Are you going to be able to make a left-hand turn into the Walgreens?
Yes.
Fantastic. So there'll be a, there'll be a dedicated turn lane?
Yes.
Off of, and there'll be two through lanes?
Yes.
Any other questions on this or for that? Thank you, Lisa, for that. That was helpful. Mr. Walden, you have anything else you wish to add?
I think that wraps it up.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anybody from the public like to comment on public hearing item two, which is the quasi judicial, sorry, for the Wright Fish Farm LLC?
Exhibit one.
I'm sorry, public hearing, quasi judicial one. Morse, did you want to add or anything? You're coming up for the next one. Okay. So with that, Commissioners, we need a motion.
I'd make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
With the changes.
With changes.
Second.
Okay, and those changes include the language that was highlighted in yellow and the corrections that were spoke to on the record.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Next item on the agenda is departmental quasi judicial, item one. Cove Salerno Partners LLC requests approval of the First Amendment to the Showcase Plan Unit Development Zoning Agreement, including revised master site plan, phasing plan, and approval of Phase One Final Site Plan. Commissioner Hetherington?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This item, I'm going to be recusing myself. Nelson Ferrera owns an interest in Cove Salerno Partners, and I am an employer of one of Mr. Ferrera's companies, Ferrera Construction. Therefore, I have turned in my...
Employee.
Employee. I have submitted my AB, and I will be abstaining from the vote on this matter.
Okay, so you have your forms and all that stuff? Fantastic.
I have submitted my form to the clerk. Thank you.
Commissioner Jenkins? This is a quasi judicial hearing.
If I have any, they've been filed.
Does Stacy need to because she's abstaining?
No.
Do you have any?
If any, they've been filed. I don't believe I have any.
I don't believe I have any. If there are, they're filed. Commissioner Campy?
I don't have any, and they've been filed.
If you don't have any, then they're not filed.
I filed the fact that I didn't have any.
Ah, there you go. Commissioner Hurd?
I too haven't had any, and that's been filed.
Okay, can we swear in anybody wishing to partake in the public hearing?
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Fantastic. Do we have anybody, do we have any interveners?
No, sir.
Would you not? Did I miss anything? All right, I'm getting better at this.
Notices were not required.
Notices were not required. Fantastic. Mr. Walden?
Thank you, Chairman. Once again, Pete Walden with the Growth Management Department, and I'd like to submit the agenda item and a copy of my work history, Exhibit One. This is a request for the First Amendment for the revised master and phasing plans for, and a Phase One Final Site Plan for the Showcase PUD. The Showcase project received PUD zoning and master site plan approval on July 14th, 2020. The project includes 79 single-family homes and 88 townhomes on an approximate 47-acre parcel. The project will have access to both Salerno Road and southeast Cove Road. Phase One of the final site plan includes 79 family home sites, single-family home sites, and the associated infrastructure and improvements to Salerno Road. Only emergency access will be provided to southeast Cove Road for Phase One, along with some pedestrian access. This is a land use map of the area. This shows the low-density land use on the project. It's very similar to the planning that's been taking place that backs up general commercial and community commercial along Canor Highway. This is the approved master site plan, and it was approved back in July. The only change to the master site plan for the revision is slight reconfiguring of the exit and entrance onto Salerno Road. Everything else remains the same on the master. The phasing plan changed a little bit. Phase One now includes Lake Five. That's the only real change, so all the excavation of the property will be handled in the first phase. So the property will be excavated and stabilized in the first phase. Phase One includes the main portion of the spine road that goes through the property, all of the improvements to Salerno Road, and, as I said, emergency and pedestrian access to Cove Road. Phase One Final Site Plan shows the reconfigured entryway. It also, like the, as with Wright Fish 711, the applicant is required to pay their share of the road improvements for turn lanes, and that amounts to $356,000. This amount will be credited to impact fees for transportation as building permits are issued. This condition is part of the PUD agreement that is enclosed. Development review staff have found the PUD amendment and site plan application to be in compliance with all applicable regulations as detailed in the attached staff report. Therefore, staff recommends that the board move to receive and file the agenda item summary and its attachments, including the staff report as Exhibit One, and move that the board approve the First Amendment to the Showcase PUD zoning agreement, including the revised master site plan and phasing plan, and approve the final, Phase One Final Site Plan. That concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Walden, thank you. Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, I'm looking at the First Amendment to Showcase PUD agreement, and I'm looking at 2.6F.
What page?
668 and 669. And it states, Martin County intends to require the relocation of the existing utilities at the utility's expense in accordance with Section 337.403.
What page number again?
668. So Martin County intends to require the relocation of the existing utilities at the utility's expense. However, if the county is unsuccessful in that effort, the county will notify Cove Salerno Partners LLC within five days of its receipt of the required cost to relocate the existing utilities. Within 30 days of the receipt, Cove Salerno Partners agrees to compensate the county in the amount of 60% of the cost to relocate the existing utilities, but no more than $90,000. So I'm looking at Chapter Two of the Comprehensive Plan, and it states, "New development shall pay the cost of the facilities it requires." So why aren't they paying the cost of the facilities that they require?
Because, this is Lisa Wixler, the county engineer. The statutes, other statutes, require the utility company to move their utilities in our right-of-way if we are working on a county project. So it would not be the county's cost, it would be the utility's cost. And in this particular case, we wanted to just have an assurance that if the utility, for some reason, didn't agree that this was a county project, and they wanted for us to pay for those utilities to be relocated, that they would be relocated at the cost of the applicant.
So these utilities aren't being relocated as a result of this approval?
They will be relocated as a result of the county's overall project that we want to do with the funds from this applicant and the previous application.
I'm, so I'm...
So that's why it was just a proportion of the total cost to move the utilities, that would be...
So we don't anticipate that there will be any cost for us to move the FPNL lines. We had an issue with another project where AT&amp;T came in and said, "No, that's not a county project," and they didn't qualify it as county project, so they charged the county for it, which then we received from the applicant. So this was just in anticipation of that potential. The FPNL will be relocating the lines at their expense. But just in case they don't, we have this provision to seek reimbursement.
So if they don't, if they don't take on the entire expense of relocating their utilities, then who's going to pay the other 40%?
That's in the Wright Fish, the 711, that was in that development order.
Wright Fish is paying 40%?
40% and 60%.
So the $200,000 that was discussed previously is that...
No, there was another item that was not amended in the PUD or in the development agreement, or the development order, I'm sorry. So one was 60,000, the other one was 90,000, I believe.
Correct.
To come up with 150.
Section G of the resolution covers that as well.
It's within the development order, G six, which is the identical language but for the percentage and the amount, is included in the Wright Fish development order.
And that's in, what page is that on?
I'm sorry, I have a printout, not a page number.
It's, you said it's in there?
It's in paragraph G six of the development order.
I see it.
So can you back up just a tad, Lisa?
Yes.
So in connection with these two projects, the county is doing some work that requires us to be involved?
The county is going to oversee the work that we're planning to do with what we just talked about, the two through lanes and the left turn lanes, and adding the bicycle lanes, using the funds from these two projects, as well as some of its own funds. We'll be bringing back a CIP sheet and budget resolutions at that time. And so when we oversee that project, if we will be relocate, or we will be requiring FPNL to relocate the power poles that are along the south side of the road.
I just, I, you may all understand it, we may understand it, people watching us and listening to us probably have no clue what we're talking about. So it makes sense, but I just, I thought it was sort of helpful to explain, why are we doing this? Because Commissioners' questions are appropriate, but how does it work and why are we doing it? And so I think that starts to tie the pieces together. We will be doing a project in conjunction with what these two applicants are doing because we choose to do it that way.
Yes.
And they're funding most, if not all, of it.
Yes.
And if it's not with the utilities, there's a way to claw back those funding because of those requirements.
Yes.
Okay. Does it all make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Clear as mud?
If you say clear as mud.
Clear as mud. Okay, any other questions for staff? Commissioner, that was your old life. Staff, Dias. Mr. Crady, good morning.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Morris Crady, Senior Vice President with La Cidon Associates. I'm here on behalf of Cove Salerno Partners LLC, and we are in agreement with staff recommendation of approval. But just a little bit of history, when I was here last time for the master plan approval, we worked carefully with Trade Bill Homeowners Association to address a concern that they had on Cove and Canor Highway, and we agreed to time our project such that Phase One would be off of Salerno Road and not Cove Road. In addition to that, we also identified a solution to one of their problems, which was redoing some turn lanes at that intersection that the county has done. And just so you know, Trade Bill, I spoke with the president of the HOA, they're very much appreciative of that work being done, and it has greatly relieved the congestion at that intersection. So now we're here today, you know, building Phase One in accordance with the PUD, and we realized, you know, during the process, that the county had a major project for that intersection that they were going to undertake, and our project was going to affect that, and the other project that Mr. Parks is doing is going to affect that. So I give your staff credit because they basically made sure that we reconfigured our intersections and we worked carefully to, with the adjacent property owner and with the county staff, so that that project would be coordinated in the best way possible. But also, you know, they required that we prepay impact fees, which was not a condition of the PUD agreement. That was something that we agreed to do to accelerate this project and to help the county do these intersection improvements concurrent with our project development. And so did Mr. Parks. So I think, to your question, they've done everything they can to put that burden and the cost of those improvements to the extent possible on the developers. And again, we accommodated them, and I think it helps everyone in the process to, just the coordination was very important, and we appreciate staff's work, and be glad to answer any other questions.
Mr. Crady, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, seeing none. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? See no one from the public. Back to the board. Any further questions of staff? Anything we need to clarify for the motion, Krista?
Now, I think we've got it, and I, again, I want to echo, I thank everybody for their cooperation, the Public Works Department and the applicants. Everyone worked together to craft language that we hope is understandable at this point, and that was the goal. So thank, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We need a motion. Don't all hold your breath at one time.
Move approval.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries four to zero, with Commissioner Hetherington abstaining.
Good sir.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is Department One, Office Management Budget Items Which Require Approval. Ms. Manning, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have 19 items on my agenda. This is Jennifer, OMB Director, and I'll probably group a couple of these items because they're similar for the same granting agencies. So for item number one, ecosystem is asking permission to apply for a grant for $230,000. It requires matching funds of $143,000, and this is for restoration of approximately four acres of seagrass within the St. Lucy Estuary and Ina River Lagoon over a three-year The second item is a permission to apply for a 2021 innovative technology for harmful algal boom, and a request in approximately $990,000 to address the algal boom. I'm tongue-tied here. And it does not require a match, except for staff time. Item number three, the Public Works Transit Division has requested a 5.2 million grant for the purchase of bus and bus facility through a discretionary funding source through Florida Transit Administration. It requires in-kind matching, that is a parcel.
Jennifer, hang on, please. Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, can somebody elaborate further on this? This is a six and a half million dollar project, of which I know nothing. Tell me about the location, tell me about the facility, tell me about the need, tell me about the uses.
This is for the transit operations facility. Right now, the county uses a contract operation where the contractor is required to provide the facility to meet the FTA requirements through the MPO. There's been studies through the transit development plan to eventually have a transit facility that would allow for the operations of the drivers, the bus storage, all those types of things that would be publicly owned, and it would also facilitate the better contracting or bidding in the future, so we have more competitive bids on having a common facility for the overall operation. a common facility for the overall operations of the facility. This grant is available through some of the more recent programs to allow us to purchase a, have a building constructed at no cost to Martin County, and would further lower our operational costs in the future. One of the sites that was proposed was the county-owned parcel next to Willoughby Boulevard, across from the proposed assisted living facility is the proposed location, near Pinewood, yes.
Where is it? What size is it? What other uses could be available on that site?
Do you recall the exact size of the parcel?
It's institutional. It's a project that the county has owned for a number of years, and so, it was too small for our public works facility site. We'd looked at it before, possibly buying property adjacent to it in the past. The board did not feel that the public works was the best facility there, so this would be, I think it was approximately 16 acres, is what we have there. But, I think the overall site necessary for, we were looking at five acres, is all that was needed for the transit operations facility.
And where is it?
On Willoughby Boulevard, next to the Pinewood.
Out the Pinewood, on the west side. Pinewood School.
And would be across the street from the assisted living facility. Yes.
And it's 16 acres?
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioners, I'm going to ask that we separate this out for approval because I'm not going to support this.
Commissioner Heatherington?
I think it certainly begs more information, you know, if there are no matching funds required, is there, are there conditions upon which we must operate the service, though, after taking the grant funds? Those kind of things I would like to know, and a little bit more about the parcel information.
So, traditionally, the transit grant is it has to be used for a transit facility for the life of the project. If you wanted to convert it to something else in the future, I don't remember the term of the program. It was like 20 years or something like that. You would have to reimburse the Federal Transit Administration if you wanted to convert it to a different use. Otherwise, you're committing it to federal transit. It would have to comply with a use that would be considered in support of transit.
Do they require you run so many routes? I mean, there must be some kind of conditions on the service you're buying.
They do not. It's just simply other communities. I think there's a transit building and that was built in Fort Pierce years ago. We had attempted at one time in the past to use the same grant to build a train depot in the city of Stewart. There was quite a bit of review when we went through that process. But, no, the operations of it is dictated by the transit entity, which is to be the Martin County Board of County Commissioners, and there's no dictation of routes, number of services, the amount of service. It would simply be that the operation of the building would be in support of transit.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Campy?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Donaldson, I appreciate your history and your knowledge on this. I had a couple of, not so much applying for a grant, but if applying for the grant leads us further down the road towards this facility, perhaps it would be a good idea that, is, let me ask you this first. Is this time-sensitive, Ms. Manning, that this grant be applied for in the next week?
I'm not sure. I'd have to defer that to Jim.
Yeah. Stop saying no.
No, it is not time-sensitive.
I would make a motion that we have this come back at our next commission meeting to have a conversation about what the funds would be used for. I'm not opposed to applying for grant funds, especially when you get involved in these long-term, big-dollar amounts. I just wanted to make sure that just getting the money from the government is terrific. However, if it boxes us, as Commissioner Heatherington was saying, boxes us into some corner, I appreciate your response, but maybe we should have an agenda item to discuss what we're looking to do with the money more clearly, not just for the commissioners, but for the public.
Sure.
So, I'd make that a motion, that we eliminate this from this agenda item and have it come back with a more broad explanation at next week's meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, and just a few thoughts on this from my perspective. One, I am not a fan of this site to begin with, and so, right off the bat, it's not, I'm not supporting that. Is this tied to a specific site, the request? Is that how it's, I mean, in terms of the, in terms of the grant application?
The, under the, we do have to have a site that's within the transit area. Other words, you couldn't have it without, outside of your.
So, is our new.
Route area. So, there is a boundary area by which we have to have a facility. Other words, we can't co-locate it with the public works facility. It has to be within the area that we're providing transit services, and that was reviewed, I guess, with the MPO and the transit development plan, but we could certainly bring that back to you to look at. It's certainly, you know, one of the opportunities to try to have our transit, potential transit system to be more efficient by having a building that we own and lower the cost. But, I understand that the concerns of what transit is to Martin County has often been a struggle, and we can discuss it further next week.
Okay, so, so the new public works site is outside of the transit corridor, I guess?
That's correct. It is not eligible as a site for a transit upgrade.
And what determines the transit corridor?
It, well, I think we can bring that back to you, but it went through the transit, we had a, the MPO went through a process, and we, there are fair definitions. You can't be too far away from where your fixed routes and your delivery of services is being provided. I don't have that definition out of my head, so.
And I'm trying to hold back from my sarcasm of humor of where we've now cited our new site, that it's supposed to be a great site for public works, but now it's out of the realm of co-locating what would be a perfect thing to co-locate. So, what I would suggest, if we're going to put this on the agenda for next week, sorry, is I would very much like whoever's involved in the conversation to have a conversation about the whole thing because it makes no sense to me at this point.
Well, I would suggest that we'll re-bring back next week if it makes sense. Otherwise, we will postpone this till January.
Well, my thought would be whenever we hold it, I'm sure the rest would like the same briefing, but I would love to meet with whoever's on top of this and see if we can't have a more broad conversation than having it here at the board meeting. So, there is a motion and a second to, do you want to continue this? Do you want to?
Just to take no action.
Sorry, are you okay with that?
Simply take no action.
Okay, so.
I would make a motion that we eliminate this item from this agenda, this, number three from this agenda item.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All who are opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next four items are resiliency-related projects. The first one, item number four, is a permission to apply for a FEMA Building Resilience Infrastructure and Communities Grant, and they would like to use it for planning and project scoping of Martin Downs Bessie Creek retrofit. The grant amount is $515,250. It requires a 30% match of $225,000, and that's budgeted in the Palm City CIP, Stormwater CIP. Item number five through eight, they're all through the Florida Resilient Coastline Program Granton, which is through FDEP, and the first one is the, it's a resilience infrastructure for Twin Rivers Shoreline. The grant amount that they're requesting to apply for is $862,000. It requires an $862,000 match. Those funds are not yet budgeted, but they're planned to be, we're going to plan it in our CIP for FY '20.
And Jennifer, let me just elaborate. Mr. Gordon's here. That's going to alleviate the concerns that Commissioner Hurd has raised relative to Twin River Parks and.
Yep. Jim Gordon, Public Works Director. This is the project for the shoreline erosion on the south side of Twin Rivers Park. That's correct.
Great.
And this is, so this will be a continuation. Didn't we spend a million plus, probably 15 years ago, doing sort of, I guess, the northeast corner, north and?
Yes, in about 15 years ago, we did a project where we did some hardening, but we didn't extend it to the south end of the park. There were some very healthy mangroves in that area that we didn't want to disturb with the project. Those mangroves have since died or been displaced, and now the area is very unstable. So, this would just be a continuation of that same project. We've already done a seagrass survey, and the survey indicates that there's quite a bit of seagrass right there, so our design will take that into account. It won't look the same as the rest of the park as far as the solution that we come up with.
Okay, great.
Item number six is the resilience infrastructure grant for Golden Gate Stormwater Treatment Area. It's in the amount of $180,000. It requires a $180,000 match. Item number seven is also a resilience infrastructure grant for Southwest Mockingbird Lane. It's for flood mitigation, and it's $810,000, and it will also require $810,000 match. And the final item is a resilience infrastructure grant for stormwater backflow prevention installation, and that is for $200,000 at a request for the grant amount, and it's a $336,000 match. The next items, nine through, item number nine is a request to apply for the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Pilot Grant for Jensen Beach Compass Rose Public Art Space Project through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. That amount is $80,000. The total project cost is $275,000, which will be funded through district funds.
Can somebody explain what this is?
So, if you recall, a few years back, well, actually, back to the hurricanes, the former Chamber of Commerce building that was destroyed in Francis and Jean was never rebuilt. The land has a very convoluted history, but ultimately, it reverted back to the county for county ownership, or I say rebuilt.
Has a deed restriction. It can only be used for the, by the chamber, otherwise it comes back to the county, correct?
And so, we did that formal process some years back. We have been using it for a small little pocket park now, that the chamber has moved into the community center, and so, we're formalizing the plaza area. We did a public art project on the plaza floor, if you will, and we're planting some trees that staff got really creative with, the South Florida Water Management District or DEP, DEP or, DEP, to do some, I guess, kind of experimental tree well grates, that is what this grant is part of, that will take the stormwater runoff from the plaza area and collect it into the, or portion of it anyway, into the stormwater boxes. There will be the tree boxes, and we'll have a little pocket park and plaza in downtown Jensen.
And where's it located? How big is it?
It's between the barber shop in downtown Jensen, across from the RICO building or Pineapple Jacks, and the community center. It's probably 200, maybe not in 200, maybe 150 by 150 feet, square feet, but it's where the old chamber building used to be located.
Okay.
Right now, it's just grass that we're mowing, but for stabilizing it and using it for art shows and other events in downtown, and the Christmas tree that we have sitting there today, it seemed like a better idea to formalize it and have it a little bit more stable.
The grant itself is for tree wells. It's new technology. It really hasn't been implemented before, and DEP was looking for some partners to implement new low-impact development water quality measures, and so, we checked a lot of the boxes. They were looking for, they wanted something that was in a downtown area that was high-impact, that residents could see the results. So, part of the grant is to go ahead and test the water that's going in, the water that's coming out, and determine if the technology works. And the reason it's very interesting to DEP and to Martin County is you're really limited on water quality measures in a built environment, so something like this with tree wells is something that you can incorporate into a downtown area without much footprint. So, we're excited to see if it works. It's only four tree wells, but that's enough data that we'll be able to analyze it and see if it's something that we want to, you know, incorporate in other projects of ours, or, you know, in the private sector. It might turn out to be something that they would like to use as well.
And Commissioner Smith, you're committed to spending district funds if you can't get DEB funds? Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Items 10 through 14 are permission to accept grants. The first item, 10, is permission to accept the Inner River Shoreline Coastline granted in the amount of $150,520. Item number 11 is permission to accept FY '21 319 Nonpoint Source Grant for $750,000, and that will reduce the connection cost for 750 residents by $1,000 to connect to the system, subject to sewer. Item number 12, permission to accept the Florida Inland Navigation Grant for Sansford Boat Ramp, and it's in the amount of $300,000. It requires a match, which is also budgeted in the Boat Ramp CIP.
Commissioner Heatherington, I know that was on your priority list as well.
Great job.
She had four to ask for. You can get three.
Five.
You had five, huh?
Said three to five.
It's three.
I'm going to add some to my list, then.
Doug bundled a couple of years ago.
I didn't bundle, not this time. Jennifer?
Okay. Item number 13 is permission to accept a hazard mitigation grant for Southwest Mockingbird Lane. It's for the drainage outfall and roadway modification Phase One, and the amount is $28,674. And the final item, permission to accept the State Florida Health EMS Grant for $21,753, and that is, that's funds training and equipment. Item number 15 is a budget resolution. We're requiring to allocate funds for insurance proceeds in anticipation of insurance proceeds to cover the cost of the damages to the EMS. The amount is $432,985.
I'm just curious on this one. What liability does the pilot incur?
Good morning, George Stok, Assistant County Administrator. All of it.
So, it's his insurance is picking up?
It will be, what will end up happening is, my understanding is, in these instances, we have a TRICO, we have to go with TRICO. It becomes an insurance-to-insurance issue, and if it's not the pilot, it is, well, it's technically not the pilot, it's the owner-operator of the aircraft, and that aircraft does have, my understanding is that they do have insurance, and if it doesn't go from the owner, if it doesn't, if they aren't insured, then there is, there is the process. The insurance companies go after the actual individual that committed the EMS issue.
And this is the second time that the EMS has been impacted?
It's the third time. In this instance, the EMS, again, performed well, as it was intended. It arrested the aircraft. There was little to no damage to the aircraft. Everyone was able to get out of the aircraft with no problem whatsoever, and in this case, the aircraft did land, and the brakes did not work.
Wow.
And we stopped it, so.
Happy ending. Thanks.
Item 16 and 17 is requiring a resolution to allocate additional funds for the overdose data action program in the amount of $1,000 for year one and year two. Item number 18 is a request from the sheriff's office to allocate $13,853 to the, from the law enforcement trust funds for the crime lab, crime, I should say, real-time crime center. And the final item, number 19, is a budget resolution to accept additional funding for the Community Services Block Grant. There are allocated an additional $3,182.56 to support the program efforts, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners. We need a motion.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners. Do we need a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve all of the remaining items.
Second. Motion, we have a second. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, hearing none, all is favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All is opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
We have reached 10:30. We are gonna take our break. I believe we're going to do some...
What we would like to do is...
A half hour, maybe, here's...
Whatever you...whatever the board would like to do, whatever your pleasure is. You're, you know, you're moving through the agenda fairly...
So let's take...let's plan on taking a half an hour. Before we take our break, and I really wished I'd done this this morning during our opening comments, today's December 7th, and at least we shall forget what occurred on December 7th. It's, you know, as time passes, people tend to forget these days. So December 7th in Pearl Harbor were certainly a significant day in our history as a country.
Very much.
You're on.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. It is 11 o'clock. We will take up item Department Two, which are contracts that meet the threshold for board approvals of $1 million or greater. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tasha Sap. For purchasing, filling in for Kristi Brotherson. I have a couple items for you today. Park Janitorial Services. It's a continuing services contract for custodial services for various park restrooms, facilities, and community centers throughout Martin County. Maximum not to exceed contract value is $1,500,000, with a maximum not to exceed contract term of five years. Staff recommends that the board award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Clean Space, Inc., and move that the board authorize the county administrator or designate to execute any and all documents related to this request. Second item is tires and tire-related services. Continuing services contract for tire and tire-related services on a as-needed basis, including but not limited to tires for heavy equipment, light duty, and passenger vehicles. Maximum not to exceed contract value is $1,500,000, with a maximum not to exceed contract term of five years. The staff recommends that the board award to Dan Callahan Enterprises with the DBA of Callahan Tires and Total Roadside Services, LLC, and that the board authorize the county administrator or designate to execute any and all documents related to this request. And this concludes my item.
Fantastic.
Move through.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Next item is Department Three. Discuss 2022 Priorities for the Board of County Commissioners. Ms. Crystal, you want to lead us off on this?
Yes, sir. So at your last meeting, the board asked that the Commissioners consider and provide to staff a list of what you believe to be your priorities for next year. And so we received those from the Commissioners. They've been provided to you via supplemental, as well as Commissioner Heatherington's. We're provided, should have a hard copy at your seat there. And so we have put them together, and we just asked that the board discuss them and provide staff with further direction as they proceed. Some of them, as we indicated, have been addressed today during our meeting, but we continue to work on them. That just because we were able to get those grants means we're moving forward. So with that, I'll just turn over to Chair Smith.
Okay, so Commissioners, you want to go through these? Are you happy with them just being on the screen? What do you want to do?
Mr. Chair, I would like to discuss them so that the public hears what our priorities are.
I figured that that would be the answer. So mine, if I'd known I could really have had four or five, my list would have been a little bit.
We could subtract two from Stacy's.
A little bit longer.
The instructions said three to five.
Yeah.
Next time it will be more clear. How's that sound?
But we accomplished one today, so you really have five.
We're ahead of the game. So last couple of years, my number one, and it's not really in order of importance, but in this case it is, the Palmar acquisition still continues to be my number one thing that I have on my list. And I really hope that this year we can step up all of our positions that we're taking. And relative to this, there's a conversation, I don't know if we want to have it at Commissioner Comments, but recently we received a legal opinion, Sarah, I guess is the word, on our litigation with Palmar. And I, for one, I am not supportive of continuing on with that litigation and for a whole host of reasons. And we don't get to talk about it at any other junction point. So my position is that we don't continue on with the challenges with that litigation, but that's just me. I don't know if you want to have that conversation now, or if you want to have it later.
Why don't you want to?
My opinion, it puts us in a stronger position and puts us back in a position of being able to be on the board because we will have.
Vote.
We will have to pay our fees, clearly. And I just think that puts us in a better position than not being able to be on the board in a voting capacity.
I agree.
There's probably a lot of other complications that come with that, but that's just my perspective. Anybody else?
Yeah. Commissioner Hurd and I wore the opposing votes to not paying our fees. But at this point right now, without having the support of South Florida Water Management, I don't know where we're going because it doesn't help us without them also engaging and re-establishing their voting rights.
So I'm sure maybe you have all had your own communications with the district. I have not been given a firm yes or no. My guess is if the board, if this board decided not to continue on, that might alter the thinking of the Water Management District. Right now, I think, and Sarah might know differently, but they're planning on moving forward. But I think it would be interesting to see what their response would be if this board decided that we were stepping out at this point.
Well, my point, for us changing our position, without them changing their position, it doesn't help us. So I hear what you're saying. But I think we're in a situation where we've got to follow through with where we're at and where we're going, unfortunately.
Commissioner Hurd, do you have your light on?
Yeah, I agree. We have, the situation at Palmar is more untenable and vulnerable than it's ever been. There's an awful lot of illegal building that's going on, a lot of wetland impacts. But people are building things in Palmar that are not permitted, and it's just going to get worse and worse. We need to step up our enforcement. We need to have a presence, and I've always believed that the district does maintain the works of the district, and therefore we are subject to an assessment. If the district is paying money for the works to be maintained, then that's a part of our responsibility to pay for the maintenance of those works. So I also would, I'm not interested in pursuing an appeal. And I'm interested in getting our vote back, and I hope that the district is too. That's the Water Management District.
Harold, was that new light?
Yeah. Trying to figure out what to say.
Can I make a suggestion, Harold? And I appreciate the perspective. If, what I would, and I talked to their executive director, and I said, look, I don't, my position on this is not to pick a battle with the district. It is to work with the district, to be in concert with the district, to get Palmar under our control and do the things that we, long-term, intend on doing with Palmar. And so my thought would be if the board voted today to say, today, we have decided not to take any further action, it'd be interesting to see if the Water Management District would say, okay, we hear you in Martin County, we're doing that. And so, anyway, I'm just.
I'm not interested in doing anything without the district making up their mind. I've had, I don't want to trash the district, but I've had a couple of Zoom calls with the management of district, their legal staff, and they're not engaged in this. This isn't a priority for them, the impression that I got. Until that changes, what's going to change? I still have a vote on that board, or we still have a vote on that board. We're not going to garner another vote without the Water Management re-engaging. So we're not going to accomplish anything.
Can I add one more thing to that?
Sure.
My conversations with Palm Beach County and their position on all of this is that they very much would like us to be back in a position where we can be saying to the district, we're all in on fixing this problem. I think it would be good for us, and if you're opposed, that's fine, if I can't convince you otherwise, I just, I think it puts us in a better position than not. In discussions with our staff, they sort of agree with that, but everybody has their opinion. I don't know what to do at this point, short of making a motion to see if there's three votes to get out. I just, in my conversations with Sarah, I, we can't. Sarah Woods. We can't have a conversation because we can't talk unless we talk down here. So, you know, I shared with her that I don't agree with continuing on, and that's not a position that I can take alone, that we can't take action with the board. As well as if we are going to continue on, then I need to vote against it because I'm not supportive of continuing on. Commissioner Heatherington.
I would just say that I know that we were talking about priorities, and this kind of went into this particular item, but I have had a brief conversation with our county attorney. But having only had that brief conversation and just hearing what you're saying, I feel like I would need a lot more information in order to assess pulling out. So, I mean, I would have to go today with staying in with the appeal process, but for some kind of larger briefing on the pros and cons of both.
Yeah.
That's where I'm at.
Huh?
That's where I'm at, too. Until we can have some conversation with Water Management that leads us down a road of solution.
As you well know, we can't talk about this.
I know.
And so I've had a one-way conversation with our staff, and I have a difference of opinion, and the only way to talk about it was here, and this opened up a door to talk about it. We don't have to make a decision today, other than just letting you all know how I feel about this publicly, so that, and Sarah, apparently you feel the same way, but Commissioner Campi.
Can we hear from our attorney first? And because I, Palmar in general, for me. And because I, Palmar in general, for me, as District 5 Commissioner, I've never sat on that panel, which I get, it's more of a hope-sound southern county issue than for me up in Martin and Palm City. So, it's always been a bit nebulous. We, I am aware of the issues that are having there, what Commissioner Hurd had said. I know it's sort of the Wild West out there, there's a lot of things going on that we didn't like. I'm trying to remember back to our conversations on why we were going to pull out. I think I was in, obviously, in that vote to pull out based on anecdotal information that I heard from key players. And I know that we've recently had a legal setback there, so I'd like to hear from Ms. Woods to hear our legal department's opinion on that. I do give Commissioner Hurd and Commissioner Smith a lot of weight in this particular issue. I yield some of my decision-making authority to their long-term experiences here, but I'd like to hear from our attorney.
Thank you, Sarah Woods, County Attorney, for the record. I would prefer to have this discussion, which we could, in an attorney-client session. That is normally the way we proceed with this. The board would, I would request that we have an attorney-client session at the next meeting, and we can talk about it. I will say that the opinion that the fourth district handed down was not clear-cut. They certified a conflict with the third district, which, which is their recognition that perhaps this should go to the Florida Supreme Court. In addition, I will say officially, the South Florida Water Management District is going forward with this. They were our partners in this lawsuit, and so, it is unusual to break ranks at this stage in the game. But again, if it pleases the board, I'd like to have an attorney-client session at the next meeting, and we can discuss the pros and cons with my, with the two, with the attorney that has, we've handled this entirely in-house, and with the attorneys who have handled this within my office.
Do you have time for advertising requirements for that for next meeting?
We're announcing it at this meeting, and we'll, we'll do the requirement. Yes, sir.
Awesome.
May I continue?
Hang on.
I'm not done, just, I just wanted to make a couple of quick points, if you don't mind, Mr. Donaldson. I hear what Ms. Woods is telling us. I am completely in favor of a, it's one of the few times that Commissioner Smith's frustration is, is that he can have a conversation one-on-one with our county attorney, but the rest of us are not there, obviously. This is a perfect example of why that shade meeting, that attorney-client privileged meeting, is appropriate, because I would like to hear from all of you. When Commissioner Smith just mentioned it, I was thinking, yes, if we're going to move forward in a productive manner, normally being involved in a lawsuit at the same time is not ideal. But I give a lot of, every time, a lot of weight to our attorney. She's the only attorney sitting up here. She represents us, she knows that side of it. The only thing I would say in closing is the fact that, for me, this is not a straight, let's move forward with the legal process, because that's the, that's, on the legal side of the issue, yes, we would stick with our partners and move forward to see it through. However, for as crazy as Palmar and all of the moving pieces and the players that are involved, it might be one of those situations where I'm, I think the advantages of getting back to it with the Palmar players would be more beneficial than moving forward with the lawsuit. So, I would make a motion that at our next meeting, we have a attorney-client privileged agenda item, so we can really hash this out. And for the public that's listening and saying, "Why are you doing it behind closed doors?" In a litigation situation, we can't show all of our cards on television publicly. If we decide to move forward with a lawsuit, there is an other side of, of the case.
Well, there's the follow-on to that. The only way we can meet is if we're in active litigation.
And we are.
In the shade, and we are.
Correct. There's, there's parameters, it's an exception to the Sunshine Law that we will follow to the T.
So, that would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, Mr. Donaldson.
My comments are not needed at this time.
How thoughtful. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to, to add an agenda item for next week, for a shade meeting for discussion on Palmar litigation. Alls in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries, you ask me. Thank you. My second item, which hopefully will not have as much in-depth diving well, in-depth, there you go.
Oh, that's cool.
Conversation. For years, we have talked, I believe, actually, in the original plans for Sail Fish Splash, there was the idea of having an additional component to the facility, which has different meanings to different people, but effectively, it's the creation of a diving well. Add-on, I guess, if you will. I met with some folks recently, just by happenstance, we kind of crossed paths, and they asked where that project was on our list of things. And I said, "You know, it comes up in conversation every once in a while, but it sometimes doesn't reach the level of where it needs to get." I think with the successes that we have had, major successes we have had with Sail Fish Splash on the tournament level, I think with IRC becoming now the home to the, what's the right term, for the international or national diving, US competition, diving competition organization, their corporate headquarters, their corporate structure will be at IRC up in Fort Pierce. It offers us a really, truly amazing opportunity, I think, to have a regional competitive dive well program that matches up with IRC, and should bring a whole lot more heads and beds in economic development to our community as another component of what Sail Fish Splash does. So, that's my second one, and then...
Can you speak to that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I was very happy to see that Commissioner Smith had put that on his list of priorities. I, too, obviously, have been hearing from folks that some, as early as the beginning of the initial project, we, we sort of put that aside for several reasons. One, the project had basically gotten to its financial cap of what we could do diving wells, you know. I think most people realize I was a pretty big proponent of the Sail Fish Splash complex, not just the recreational side of it, but the competitive side. And one of the things in my mind that was a deciding factor for the competitive side is that people have to remember, we designed that facility with the list of criteria that the Site Selection Committee for the National High School Athletic Association looks for. So, it's basically, as I've said in the past, like getting the answers to the test ahead of time. So, we built the facility based on what would be the criteria necessary, and I think that has paid off in spades, because we have had, we have hosted the state high school swimming and diving competitions for nearly a decade. And most communities, including Miami, Fort Lauderdale, Orlando, Tampa, Jacksonville, you get one or two years, and we have about, I think we're going, with the, with the way it works, almost a decade. And one of the things that would have really benefited us even further was the diving well. We originally tried to see if we could incorporate it into the filtration facilities that we had already built. It basically needs to be a separate entity. The original concern for a diving well was that it will not be available for general use of our public. It's dangerous, it's meant for competitive side. The advantage for us as a community, especially considering what Commissioner Smith said, which is accurate, IRC is definitely looking to be in the game, not just regionally in Florida, in the southeastern region, in diving and swimming. Their new president is all on board with this, so it would be a terrific compliment for us to have a facility that's complementary to what they're doing. But one other important issue that I'd want to put out there in support of Commissioner Smith's recommendation here, is that we have, as a community, had colleges throughout the United States of America that are looking to do spring training. They come down and swim in the pool. A lot of colleges come down and have their rowing programs here in Florida, specifically in Martin County. I think that there's an opportunity for us, especially with Tourism Development and our Treasure Coast Sports Commission, to reach out to maybe D2, D3, potentially D1 universities, and say, "We are creating a winter destination for athletic teams to come down." It can be golf, it can be equestrian, it can be rowing, it can be sailing, it could be swimming and diving, it could be softball, it could be baseball, all of these things. And so, now, a college can make a determination that they're going to bring multiple sports teams to Martin County. It's not as crazy as Fort Lauderdale and Miami and some of these bigger cities, they're not going to have to worry about, you know, their kids being put into communities in the evenings of higher crime rates. There's a lot of reasons why Martin County would be an excellent location. We're not getting the full level of swimming participation that we could get as a spring training destination for colleges, because we don't have a diving well. They are expensive, they are very specific to their benefits, but I think the pool has spoken, has proved itself a worthwhile thing of our community. And finally, a lot of people say that the county has spent too much time getting involved in things that should be in the private sector. I don't completely disagree with that. However, the private sector will not be building a diving well. Thank you.
It also allows, I guess, from talking to Parks and so on on this, there's a handful of other very competitive applications that, as having that separate facility, synchronized swimming and other things will be available to us as well, to add, water polo to add to the, to the mix. So, that's my second one. And the last one, the Economic Council has requested of us a series of smaller projects, but things that they have bundled together into one ask of their priorities for the year for us to try to accomplish. So, I'm more than happy to advance their requests as part of my ask for the coming year. Commissioner Heatherington.
Okay, so yeah, you won't see mine on the screen, but I do have more than three, but some of them are continuations. Just as I did the last two years, the communications has always been one of my priorities and always will be while I'm sitting up here. I think particularly, we have started a good communications plan, the Old Palm City Road, Old Palm City Neighborhood Capital Projects, put together a really good community outreach plan for that. Now, of course, you know, they have limited time and resources. If we could do that for every single project that we're doing, that would, I think, go a long way. I just talked to a resident out during the break in the lobby, who had a lot of questions about an upcoming septic-to-sewer program. Those are very complicated, and I think that if we can continue to communicate on those capital projects, then that's certainly going to be beneficial. My second, the list is to fund, we are almost 100% designed with our Golden Gate El Camino Trail, so I'd like to get shovels in the ground this year and get that completed. You spoke, Ms. Krizda, earlier on Sandsbrit Park boat ramp, so we, of course, got the FINE grant, but I want to make sure that while we're addressing the boat ramp renovations in Sandsbrit Park, we have the crosswalk that goes on the corner, there is a lot of speeding on that road. I'd like to realign, and I've spoken to county engineering, realign the crosswalk on that curve, bring it down, connect the sidewalk on the other side of the road. So, that's something that needs to be included, I believe, in our capital projects for the coming year, is to realign that sidewalk and put in, realign the crosswalk and put in the sidewalk. Of course, support land acquisition efforts, specifically for SERP in Am River Lagoon South and Loxaluzy. And this is something new, and had a couple meetings, an outdoor aviation education center. One of the things I've noticed is there's a, we keep talking about workforce development and trade pipelines, and aviation and marine happens to be some of our targeted industries, but we're just not exposing our young people to some of those trades. Aviation and marine, if those are our targeted industries, should be in the forefront, and we should be exposing and pipelining some of our young people into that. There was a proposal of a private-public partnership on a piece of land over, off of Monterey, to do an educational, outdoor activity area that exposes people to general aviation. So, I look forward to supporting those efforts in the coming year, and I think that we should look again at our airport master plan and make sure that we are creating opportunities for some of our high-wage, high-paying jobs that are already existing on the airport, ways for them to expand. I've talked to a number of them, and they, they're looking for ways to expand on our airport, bringing in some of those jobs, and right now, they're not able to do so. And then finally, there's, there's one more, and that's a continuation, again, of last year, is to continue to work on our procurement procedures. I think that we've done that. I would also like to, and I've had a couple conversations about this, explore construction management at risk, and see if we can use that methodology to deliver. We have a couple projects, like our Public Works Facility, it might be too late to do on the fire rescue training facility, but if we can get some cost savings out of exploring these methods and deliver these projects on time and on budget, I think it's certainly worth looking at that methodology. And that's all I have.
Fantastic. Who's next? Commissioner Jenkins.
So, my first item is something that's always been on my, my list. So, it's, we have, I'd like to build on the continuing success of our customer-service-based delivering services to the public. I believe that we are doing a very good job. Listening to Mr. Parks' comments this morning, I should make us all very proud that we, we have accomplished, we have room to grow on that. Also, part of that, years ago, we're doing surveys. Apparently, we are doing surveys, from what I understand, in building and growth management, but I've never seen any results. So, I would like to now hone in on that, see what those surveys are, and make them effective, and make us and the public aware of what the results are, right? So, the, the next item also has been, is, is one of my big things, is supporting the momentum we've developed with our CRAs. We now have recent, two recent major projects that have been completed successfully. We have another one that is getting to the point of being that, that should be examples to the publics of what, public, of what we can do. And we've got big plans for, for, at least in my CRA. So, that's something that I will always be supporting. Three is providing support for acquiring environmentally sensitive lands in, within Palmar, within everywhere, but specifically Palmar and Loxaluzy is in, specific to my district. I'd like to, you know, when they did the Loxaluzy presentation a year ago, probably, right? Close to a year ago, we talked about a referendum on sales tax. We've not had that conversation since. I think we should, I would assume that we need to, if we're going to support that, that we've got to do something soon. Next November is coming pretty quickly. So, I would like to see a discussion item in the future of how we're doing, the language we're doing, and all that stuff. So, that's that. Again, specific to my district is restoring northern tributaries of the Locksatchie River by connecting historic sloughs and wetland systems to provide flood protection. And not only flood protection, but clean water to the Locksatchie River. We have a number of projects that are going on. We got the Eastern Flowway, Central Flowway, and Western Flowway to Kitchen Creek that I'm working with John and, and Mike Houston on. Something new that we're exploring is the restoration of Banner Lake, Banner Lake itself, and all the wetlands to the north that feed Banner Lake, that goes all the way up to Point Santa Gardens, which some of what's happened in those sloughs and wetlands have created the situation of raising groundwater that have impacted Hope Heights area. So, improving that way the water flows to, and restoring it back to its historic flows into, into Banner Lake. and then establishing a real outfall for Banner Lake into, into the park, again, as it was historically. It was interesting going through this process, going back to look at those areas in the 40s and really looking at them tight of how the water used to get down and what's been done to alter that up to this point. Then another item that's been on my, my list since the beginning, and I've really not, other than supporting habitat, which is a very positive thing, is, is real, is another affordable housing method. So I currently have a group of folks in the Banner Lake area that are trying to develop a land trust. There's a piece of property that the county owns that we can potentially be partners in, a real localized affordable housing or workforce housing or whatever kind of housing you want to call it. So that's something that I'm, I'm beginning to, to work on, and I'll keep you apprised of, that, that we can maybe do something meaningful on a small scale that could be potentially a, an example of, of what we can do in the future.
Sure you know this, but there are some fantastic models throughout the state
Yep.
doing that. We looked at, Winter Gardens, I think, was one years and years ago that really did a phenomenal job with some neighborhoods that, you know, just Susan Corres and I've talked about it for a couple of years, and how could we model that, you know, program CRA-wide? And yours may or may not be in the CRA, but it just, it's a program that's absolutely replicable. So looking forward to that.
This, this has to do with land trusts, and we're going to do a educational thing that Michelle from Health and Human Services.
Miller.
Miller, geez. I'm sorry, Michelle. Anyway, is putting on. And then we're going to do a tour of a project down in Deerfold, I think, that, a very successful project. So, yeah.
Good luck. Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, in no particular order, these are my priorities. The first is the getting approval for Indian River Lagoon South natural lands component. It's always been a part of the IRL South, and for reasons that I won't elaborate on, it was not included in the Word of Authorization in 2007. But now Colonel Kelly, he, he made it a priority, and Southwater Water Management District also agreed to make it a priority. So first of all, we have to have a project participation agreement, followed by Word of Authorization. So that's a top priority for 2022, is to get the natural lands component authorized in the Word of 2022. My next priority is a successful sales tax land acquisition referendum, and I want to do that in November 2022. So time's a-wastin'. I think that we can get the guardians to help us with outreach on that. It's, it's, it's critically important, but we have an awful lot of work to do to determine what we're going to target, for how long we're going to target, whether it's going to be a sale, if it's a sales at a half cent, five years, whatever. We have lots of things to consider. Also, improvements at Twin Rivers Park. Twin Rivers Park is arguably one of the most wonderful assets in the county. It's visited every day by hundreds and hundreds of our residents, and the improvements to the erosion need to be undertaken, and they need to be undertaken quickly because it continues to erode each year. And also, the maintenance at the park is substandard, and it needs to be, trash is a problem. I recognize that there's, I think there's an awful lot of underage drinking that's occurring there at night, and I'm not going to judge, you know, that's, that's the parents' problem, but garbage is everybody's problem, and it's, it needs to be maintained better. The landscapers need to do a better job. There are ant hills, fire ant hills that are next to the sidewalks, that the stop bars in the parking spaces are non-existent or in disarray. It's, I recognize that there are different levels of service for maintenance of our assets, and certainly I, I would, I would expect that the maintenance at the beaches is the best of all. I don't, I recognize that, that Twin Rivers is not going to get that same kind of attention, but it needs to get far more attention because it's a wonderful asset, and it's, it's, it's unacceptable. And lastly, the, I think we're going to see this year some really, really big applications in the county, things like Discovery and Harmony and Three Lakes, and however we, whatever we decide is going to have an indelible impact in Martin County forever. It will forever frame how Martin County is facing future development. For me, the top priority is, is guaranteeing the environmental caring capacity of Martin County, and so I don't know what the right decisions are right now, but it's going to be an extremely important decision for all of us because that's going to be the legacy, I think, of this board, is how we deal with those very, very big proposals.
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cappy?
Thank you, sir. I left a couple on my list from last year purely because I wanted to thank and tell staff that I appreciate the fact that some of the things that were on the list last year are now well on their way to completion. My first thing was district infrastructure, and that for, for many people in District Five, drainage and flooding issues, not just in Palm City Farms, because the system is interconnected. It starts in Palm City Farms way out west, and it goes all the way to the river. Martin Downs, the homeowners' association has issues, Canopy Creek has issues, Lighthouse Point has issues, and it's all interconnected, especially out in Palm City Farms. I wanted to thank and compliment staff because we've been at that for a long time. There was a large study that was done. It's, most of the results are coming in now. A lot of that will be sort of a master plan for figuring out exactly how we can address these issues upstream, downstream. When it's so interconnected, if you do something in a certain portion of the community, it might have an adverse effect for someone else. So it's been a very tricky process. I'd like to thank the residents. A group of them have organized and held town hall meetings that staff has always been included and invited to participate in. It really is a collaboration between the residents and the county staff, so I'm very pleased with that. The second one is, again, something that we have already begun to address. None of these are shocking things that have just popped up, and that is the issue of broadband connectivity. It is something that thankfully for us is being really addressed at the national level with ARPA funds. At the state level, the Florida Association of Counties has recently organized what they're calling County Commission Community Champions, one from each of the 67 counties. I appreciate my board's support to make me our county commission champion for broadband. I personally believe that broadband is now a utility. It is no different than electricity or water, because a lot of students have to take classes virtually, a lot of business owners have to take classes, not classes, have to work virtually. Health, the, the whole health industry has changed, the medical industry has changed, where a lot of people are having medical appointments via Zoom or the internet, and you, if you have internet access at home, if you have high-speed internet access at home, this is not an issue for you. But believe it or not, in Martin County, we have residents that are willing to pay for it, but have none. And so, I mean, can you imagine not having any internet or cable access? So I think that that's something that we are addressing, but we need to keep the focus on. The next is, obviously, we're all been working on septic-to-sewer conversions. I'm thrilled to say that as we roll into 2022, we're headed into Palm City. We have been waiting patiently, the residents there. So I'm very happy that, that the timing is right. It's, it's now, Palm City is next in line, current, you know, at the front of the line, and I'm very appreciative of the grants that we were able to get. Commissioner Hurd mentioned it this morning, multi-millions of dollars, that we would have had to come up with those funds either as a community or the residents, but to have those dollars, and I think, like Mr. Emerson said this morning, we are well ahead with, with really smart thinking strategy of bundling these projects together instead of just going out one at a time and starting the process repeatedly. I think we are at the forefront at the state level for that, and that will have a huge return on investment. But I also think it's important that we educate citizens on what these conversions will mean to them. If you have a brand-new home with a brand-new septic system, we're not going to come and pound on your front door and say, you must participate. I think that we have to work on the education facet of that so citizens know exactly what will be their responsibilities and what won't be their responsibilities, at least in the short term. I appreciate that Commissioner Heatherington had singled out the Old Palm City infrastructure project. You know, whenever the county vehicles show up, especially bulldozers and dump trucks, people get panicky. They really appreciate the end results, but you can imagine people are concerned. And so first, before the project ever started, our staff really sent out a lot of information so that the residents understood ahead of time. So when that, when that equipment showed up, they knew that it was coming, and they understood why it was there. And then the positive feedback that I've received from residents on how well the project was handled during the construction and the renovations, and how perfectly it was handled when it was over, to show that they got all of the benefits without really any of the downsides. If they had to chop people's driveways up, if they had to go onto people's property and beat up their lawns, it was all put back beautifully, probably better than it was originally. So I very much appreciate that. Fire rescue infrastructure, Station 14 under construction, Station 18 under construction, Station 33 under construction, Station 36 under construction. Now, all different phases of construction. Some, they're just getting started, like out on Hutchinson Island, and others, they're just about done. So I really like to compliment our staff and the construction folks that have been doing those projects. It's easy for us to just say, well, we should do this, and we should do this, and we should do this. These are getting done. The final aspect of the fire rescue infrastructure, as Commissioner Heatherington had said earlier, is the construction of training classrooms and a tower, a training tower. There has been some feedback that I've received, I guess all of the commissioners did, that why is this necessary? It's on, it's not really a requirement. We've been down the road on why we've discussed why it is necessary, taking our equipment and our personnel all the way up to Fort Pierce for training. This is not just generalized training. This is training first and foremost to keep our men and women of fire rescue safe, because no one wants to be reading in the paper about a tragedy. So that's first. Then, secondly, to keep our residents safe, because if these folks are not trained in all of the most up-to-date current, this is an ever-evolving techniques that they're using and training that they're using. I believe it is important that we have one here. We have so many other facets, we wouldn't just exclude that. The next thing in terms of infrastructure, and I know that I've sometimes kidded, kid, Mr. Donaldson on our maintenance facility has been on his, on his wish list for such a long time. I think we discuss it in some years, we really discuss it a lot, but we're no further, except for some land possibilities, of making this an actual reality. It's, it will reap financial savings for taxpayers. It'll reap efficiencies for the people that have to do it. It'll be a safer place, it'll be a more effective and efficient facility. I think 2022 should be the year that, at this time next year, we are congratulating the fact that it's nearly done.
That was an add-on.
Yes, I, that's still, you know, unbundling. Parks and Recreation Infrastructure, last year it was on my list as well, and I want to compliment Parks and Rec staff, and, and there's a multi-departmental philosophy in the county where engineering and environmental and Parks and Rec and Public Works all work collaboratively so that they're not all working in silos, not knowing what each one is doing. And we've done a lot of that this year. I'd like to continue our efforts to work with the, Nate Kiplinger and the folks at Newfield. They're going to need athletic facilities on their property and their project that's right across Citrus Boulevard from our Citrus baseball fields. And we've had in Palm City some soccer field issues that we've been working on. We've collaborated with that project so that their facilities can be collaboration with us, and we can run those facilities. They will eventually be Parks and Rec infrastructure in the, in the inventory, so I like that very much. I'd like to make a recommendation. I've had some folks from girls softball that have been, they're, they're highly competitive and very, very successful. So they've been competing all over the state and all over the southeast portion of the United States, and they've been giving me suggestions on some artificial turf ball fields that they have seen, that are nearly bulletproof, that don't require tremendous amounts of maintenance. There's not a lot of, obviously, irrigation, there's not a lot of fertilizers that are responsible. It's an expense upfront, but the savings you would reap as a benefit for, for years and years to come. I'd be willing to use Justin Wilson, which is the home fields for that girls softball, as a couple of test sites for a couple of these artificial ball fields. I'd like to also work with Legal this year, the Treasure Coast Rowing Club. Lease is getting ready to come, to expire. I'd like to work with them on a multi-year renewal, because they have a lot of exciting opportunities there. They have a lot of folks that would be willing to make large financial donations, but just like the Children's Museum and the
Something longer-term.
And the, yes, and so, and I know Doug, Commissioner Smith has been an advocate for the, for the rowing club there for, since he's gotten into office. They also have some folks that would be willing to make big donations similar to the Elliott Museum, but they need to have long-term leases to do that. They also have some very exciting plans to reconfigure and enhance that facility. It's a quiet little club in Palm City at Charlie Leighton Park. It's for grownups and children, so I would make a plug for anyone that's interested in learning more about rowing. It is a beautiful sport. It's, there's a lot of scholarship opportunities for students that go untaken from folks that just don't know to do it. And so we have that right here in Martin County. So if you are a senior or an adult, or if you have kids that are looking to do something different than the traditional sports, I would strongly recommend rowing. It's a great group of kids and adults that run the program, and so I'd like to support them further. We have some Charlie Leighton Park enhancements that when we did our budget changes and reductions, I participated in those reductions, so that will slow that down, but I'd like to keep that going. And finally, Citrus Grove Baseball Fields is a beautiful facility, and Kevin Abate and his staff have been out there with Mark Rogers and his folks from Martin County North Little League. This is the home of the state champion Martin County North Little League team. We've celebrated them here. They've been celebrated all over the county. Facilities get a lot of use, which is terrific, but that also beats them up. Mr. Abate and his team and I had met out there. There are some expenses involved in that, some I will absorb as the district commissioner, but others will have to fall into the parks' FAB, I believe. But all of these facilities, especially when the, when the groups that use them have had such a level of success that makes everyone in the community filled with pride, then we owe it to those organizations to keep these facilities at a top-notch rate, because when people come to compete against them, state champions, the facilities really speak to who we are as a community. So those are my issues. I very much appreciate it. I had a last, but we're going to discuss traffic safety as a separate agenda item. I will reserve my comments till then.
I just want to take your last comments, Commissioner Heatherington's comments on one of her priorities. I, I think a story, Taryn, that, that I think both commissioners have talked about it, we talk about it ourselves. You have this amazing national, international success story going on with some of our facilities, from rowing to sailing to baseball, to diving, swimming, not diving, but swimming.
Well, they dive, they have spring Well, they dive, they have springboards.
So I, there ought to be, I mean, those are the kind of opportunities that we should be telling our story on a, on a, on a bigger stage. And I think to Commissioner Heatherington's point, on the communication side, those are some really amazing things and not everybody gets to know that or not everybody gets to see it. US Sailing had some teams in this weekend. It was fantastic. We didn't apparently have a lot of wind out there this weekend, but the place was packed and that has all sorts of lateral opportunities to it. So I agree, Ed and Stacy, on, on both of those kind of ideas coming together and hopefully we can tell, put a story together that really highlights those successes. Commissioner Hurd.
Yeah. One more problem that, that I think that we need to, to attempt to address is homelessness. The public speaker this morning talked about an incident that, with his children, that was extremely troubling and you could tell that he had tried to resolve it himself and ran into roadblocks and no solutions. And we need to work on, on policies, enforcement, and also early in my term, there was a public-private partnership to build a homeless shelter for, a shelter for homeless mothers down in, in Port Salerno. I used district funds to, I used $200,000 or $300,000 of district funds in order to help with that. There are no facilities in Martin County for homeless fathers and there are no shelters for homeless men and these are, these are things that we should consider. I think that there, our problems are just going to, to, to increase. Thank you.
Commissioner Campy, is there a new one?
Yes, please. I'm glad Commissioner Hurd brought that up. That's been an issue that I've sort of had on my mind for a long time, even that when I was sworn in again in my inaugural comments made that. We do have a couple of not-for-profits that have been doing remarkable work in the community on the, on the private side. But what I have learned, and it's an important distinction to make, is there's different types of homeless. There is chronic homeless, the gentleman this morning, I mean, the reason I was willing to let him continue to speak is, one, we needed to hear how that story ended with his children. But that's sadly, all of us have seen it. I remember just a few years ago, there was always a homeless issue in Martin County, but it was much more secret. I'm seeing homeless people with cardboard signs in medians on our roadways, all over the parking lot at major retail, big box stores. And, you know, depending on the day, sometimes I feel compassion for folks that are out there and, you know, that they have potentially humiliating themselves to the point for begging for money. But there's chronic homeless that are dangerous individuals that could be there for a host of reasons. Some are, are mental health issues, some are PTSD issues, which is of course, mental health. Some folks just want to be homeless. We've all heard the stories of, you know, people, you could take a homeless individual and put them in an apartment and pay the bills and two weeks later, they're going to be back out because it's, it's mental health issues versus us just giving shelter and, and supplies. The other thing that's important to realize is that some of this is drug addiction and so you'd have to address those root causes on why people are homeless. So everyone gets concerned that homeless is such a gigantic issue that we shouldn't address it. But then it becomes security and safety issues and crime issues. And so I agree with what Commissioner Hurd is saying. We do not have a men's shelter. I have heard from folks that if you're a family, that you will not separate the family. They say, "Well, we do have a men's shelter, it's in Fort Pierce." Well, you're not separating up a family and, and that's not, shouldn't be our goal. And the last thing I would say to the homeless issue is that young people that are in foster care, once they reach the age of 18, they're no longer eligible for foster care housing and they become homeless. We have addressed the issue with folks that were lured down here for pill mills and sober homes, that once their insurance ran out, they were thrown out of those sober home. I think we've addressed the sober home issue pretty well. So if you look at it, we should address, it's like three levels of homeless. There are certain people that by circumstance are homeless and those are the ones we can immediately help.
Can I suggest we're not going to solve this today?
No, I know, but it's important that we add it as a collective priority.
Your screen is going. My screen's going nuts, my laptop's going nuts. Commissioner Heatherington.
I just have a brief comment, you know, on that. I agree with both of the comments of Commissioner Hurd and Commissioner Campy. We had been, it would have been brought to our attention, there were some issues in my district and community policing and I have been meeting for a couple of years now and they've done presentations, we've brought in Lahaya, have a really good collaborative group. And as, as the development particularly in the urban areas of the city of Stewart continues and as you see more and more of that vacant land cleared, it starts to push, you know, a lot of the homelessness into some of our neighborhoods. So we've been addressing some of those challenges. In addition, in our most recent meeting, community policing did a very, a large presentation on some traffic safety issues from, from these, some of these folks being in the medians and causing not only injury to themselves by stepping off these very, very busy intersections. It's a danger to them and also oncoming traffic, DOT weighed in. So I had talked to our county attorney and we're looking at a broader way, an ordinance to solve some of those issues that would try to discourage or prevent people from harboring in these particular medians that are very, very dangerous. So I hope that, I know we've collaborated with the sheriff's attorney and yourself and hopefully that will come back very soon because I think that's an appropriate way to handle it and it certainly is all about safety in those, so.
Okay. Thank you all for all of the things. We have our work cut out for us this year. We will come back at 1:30 and we'll take up Department Four redistricting for the 2020 year.